Smile, you're on camera.
Two minutes, Brian, two minutes.
Two minutes, everybody.
One minute. Give our thirty seconds, stand by, thirty seconds. Okay, pause, stand and go, please.
I call this meeting in the North Adams City Council Store for November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. This meeting can be viewed live on Northern Berkshire Community Television Station Channel thirteen-oh-three and will be posted to their website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at www.youtube.com/AtNorthAdams. Just click on the "Live" and then on the twenty-twenty-five dot eleven dot twenty-five City Council Meeting. And this meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackner, here. Bona is absent. Brain?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Oleskowitz is absent. Shay?
Present.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
You have seven present.
We have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance as we remember the victims of a tragic fire that took two lives yesterday morning on Francis Street. End the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five City Council Meeting minutes, do we have a motion?
We'll go pro.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose, hearing done. Hearing the visitors on the agenda, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you've reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody that wishes to speak on hearing the visitors, please raise your hand and I will call you to the mic. All right, we do not have anybody who wishes to speak tonight. There are no old business items on the agenda tonight, so I am going to move directly into new business. Council Paper number twelve thousand five forty-two, Communication Number one thirty-nine from Mayor Maxey announcing the appointments of Sierra Dowling to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-eight, John Tresky and Robert Simmons to the Commission on Disabilities, and Julia Dixon to the Cultural Council of Northern Berkshire. I'm going to turn it over without objection, and I'm going to turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, President Sapienza. I'm pleased to announce the appointment of the following people. Sierra Dowling, Board of Assessors, with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight, John Tresky and Robert Simmons, the Commission on Disabilities, for terms to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight. I think I said two thousand and eight. Did I say that with Sierra? Twenty-twenty-eight. And Julia Dixon for the Cultural Council of Northern Berkshire, to expire on November twelfth, twenty-twenty-eight. I thank all of these individuals for their commitment to helping us move North Adams forward. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Council Paper number twelve thousand five forty-three, Communication Number one forty from Mayor Maxey presenting a proclamation in support of survivors of Suicide Loss Day. I will file the communication without objection and turn it over to the mayor.
So on November twenty-second was International Survivors of Suicide Loss Day. I didn't want it to go without being said that it's just as hard as anything when you lose someone and you don't know how to figure it out. So, whereas International Survivors of Suicide Loss Day is observed each year as a day when family members, friends, and communities come together to offer support, compassion, understanding to those who lost a loved one to suicide. And whereas the loss of suicide carries a profound lasting impact on families, friends, neighbors, and the broader community, often leaving survivors to navigate complex feelings of grief, stigma, and many unanswered questions. And whereas the city of North Adams recognizes that healing after suicide loss requires community connection, open dialogue, and accessible mental health resources that affirm the dignity and experiences of all survivors. And whereas organizations advocate and support groups from across the Commonwealth and nationwide to work tirelessly to raise awareness, provide education, and to extend vital services to survivors of suicide loss. Whereas on this day, we honor the memories of those who lost to suicide, stand in solidarity with survivors, and recommit ourselves to building a compassionate community rooted in understanding, resilience, and healing. Now therefore I, Jennifer A. Maxey, Mayor of the City of North Adams, do proclaim November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, as International Survivors' Day of Suicide Loss. And if I may, President, I just ask that with Thanksgiving right around the corner, we also remember that, to check in on our neighbors and our families and really appreciate what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Paper number twelve thousand five forty-four, Communication from Councillor Fitch requesting time for Matthew Alkenbreit, Executive Director of Berkshire Food Project, to present on alleviating hunger, food insecurity, and social isolation in North Adams. I'm going to file the communication without objection, and I'm going to turn it over to Councillor Fitch.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you for taking this time to listen to Berkshire Food Project, Matthew Alkenbreit, the needs of the community. It's a really important time to have this discussion, and I just feel very thankful that Matthew was willing to come in here and talk about the needs of the community because Matthew really sees and knows the needs of the community right now. So, Matthew, if you're willing to come up to the podium, Matt, tell us what you know. Tell us how we can support.
Thank you very much. As I was introduced to Matt Alkenbreit and the Executive Director of Berkshire Food Project, and Berkshire Food Project has existed in this community for close to forty years, located at one thirty-four Main Street at the Congregational Church. I assumed the position as Executive Director in early September, coming from over five years at the Brain Center, and really thrilled and kind of at a very unprecedented time as we've seen the last month. The Berkshire Food Project serves to combat two things equally important, food insecurity and social isolation. It's a way for us to provide a healthy nutritious homemade-from-scratch meal every single day of the week, Monday through Friday, eleven-thirty to one, to the community at no cost, no questions asked. We do not take any information from people when they walk in. As I say, you can walk in with a billion dollars, you can walk in with no dollars. We don't care what your status is, we care that you're there and that you have come to us for our lunch. Also, socialization is, in social isolation, we see, as the mayor just mentioned, about suicide prevention and as the recent tragedies in our own community, we never know what's happening. We can't always fully understand why things are happening. So, there's such a need for safe places for people to be, to come and just to be there. So, to combat that piece of it is what the Berkshire Food Project does as well. Just a few statistics, and I won't draw these out, but over the last couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to speak at several different places, and I've used the number forty-five percent as the increase. That was actually somewhat generous of me because I just did our recent numbers today. And from two thousand twenty-four until now, and November to November two thousand twenty-five, our total increase, our overall increase, is twenty-one percent of an increase. However, that forty-five percent increase I was speaking of in the last five weeks, that increase in the last five weeks, so there's twenty-one percent within the last year of need of people coming to us to receive our meals and our space. The increase that we've seen total is fifty-two percent over the last five to six weeks within our doors at Berkshire Food Project. Between September and October, it was a hundred and nineteen percent increase. Between October to now, it's a sixty-seven percent decrease. And the reason I say it decreased is because we haven't finished the month, and we actually have Veterans Day off, we have two days off, we have our Thanksgiving meal, but those meals and our tallies include our to-go meals, which we have almost three hundred ready to go out tomorrow. So, those numbers will now flip again. So, this is, I'm giving you numbers in live time, as much as best as I can to see it. Our meals also not only are served in-house, they are to-go. People can take a meal to-go so they have something for supper. For the evening, we also provide meals to the Lewison House, Roots Teen Center, Happy Hope Recovery Center, UCP of Berkshire County. And we do our home delivery program of fifty meals three times a week and boxes of extra perishable, non-perishable goods that we may have extra to do home deliveries to people who are homebound, and that's at the graciousness of Northern Berkshire Transit. To date, we have served forty thousand one hundred ninety-seven meals to this community. We have served twenty-six thousand five hundred seventy-seven individuals this year, January twenty-twenty-five. And the largest number is our increase in new faces. We do take a tally of that. While we don't take any information on people, we get to know our people, and we know who's new, and we know who's a regular. And so, we keep tally of that just in our own head. So, it might not be a perfect number, but it's a pretty accurate number. That number has seen an increase overall in the past five to six weeks of approximately seventy-seven percent increase. So, in total this year, three hundred and sixty-one new people have come to us for services. So, why do I say all that? It's because there's an increasing need in this community for food and for the food insecurity, you know, that people are facing. There's an increasing need for homelessness, of homelessness, increasing need for safe spaces for people to be. Many of our guests that come in the dining room don't eat, they just want to be warm. They want a place to sleep, and we let them do that, you know, within reason. They can't lay out on the table, but they can certainly put their head down. And they might need a place to, you know, just to be and to feel safe. As we know, food breaks down a lot of barriers. When we put a meal out, a lot of things come off the table, right? And so, we're able to have pretty open and honest conversations with people. And that's the job also of the social isolation piece, is we are trying right now as a community effort to do our Celebrated Community Partners Program, bringing local community into the Berkshire Food Project, Berkshire Health Systems, the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition, the North Adams School System, the Adult Education, the Brain Center, all these places. And the goal is not for them to table, it's like you would maybe think. The goal is them to eat lunch, to eat lunch and to dine with our guests and to create a safe relationship where a conversation can happen. It's easy to say, "Go check in at the Brain Center for a mental health referral." Most people won't do that. They will, they may, there may be an increase for that referral to happen if the person is met, you know, peer-to-peer rather than agency-to-agency. So, those are just a little bit of the statistics of the Berkshire Food Project. And what we are facing right now as a project is a good problem in the sense that we are continuing to provide this need. With the generous donations of our community, first of all, our generous donors and grants, and all of our funding through Northern Berkshire United Way, the Williamstown Community Chest, so many other grants, our food sources of Stop &amp; Shop Big Y, Walmart, and the Food Bank of Western Massachusetts with the use of the Goodwill Food Truck. All these places, you know, kind of bring the food to us. What we're seeing now is not a decrease in donation, and the increase in need is causing our program to have to put into our budget a little bit more to purchase food for the first time in a long time, to really kind of allocate a lot more funds to the purchasing of food, and that's okay as well. Yesterday, we were very pleased to have a fully sponsored, fully no-cost Thanksgiving feast at Berkshire Food Project that was completely donated by the community. You name it, from the gravy to the pies to everything in between, the flowers on the table were all donated at the generosity of this community. And it's a testament to who this community is and who this community continues to be. But we'd like to see, you know, just the, I guess, some more support, you know, from just the local community in our mission and how we can continue to reach out, branch out, and help these people that come to us. We were happy yesterday to have many representatives from different areas of the community, various restaurants, various bakeries were present. Representative John Barrett was present to help us serve. People from the North Adams Public School System were present. And so, I just want to let everybody here know that you are most welcome to the Berkshire Food Project. Our goal is to have you come and eat. That's all we want you to do, is to come and eat at the Berkshire Food Project and to build those relationships with the greater community. The one struggle that we are having right now is with our kitchen space. Our kitchen is inadequate for the size of the meals that we have to prepare each and every day. The size of our dining room is okay, it's a transient room, so we have wiggle room to welcome the guests as they move along in and out. But the kitchen space itself is probably okay for about one hundred to one hundred and twenty meals being prepared. We're now preparing about two hundred and fifty every single day that are going out into this community. So, I've met with the mayor regarding this, and not looking for any quick fix. You know, this is not something that happens overnight, but just to bring this awareness, and I thank Councillor Fitch for allowing me or inviting me to come here to this meeting tonight just to let you know that we're there and let you know what our needs are, what the realities are out in the community, and also just to invite you, please come. We'd love to see you, I know our guests would love to see you. And that goes for anybody in this room or anybody watching. Berkshire Food Project is there for everybody. And like I said, tomorrow, we do close up for the end of the week, for the holiday, but what we will do is we are prepared to give out double takeout meals to individuals tomorrow. We've prepared almost three hundred Thanksgiving dinners on top of what we served yesterday. And that's all volunteer-driven, I need to also mention that for anybody who's watching before I get, you know, a ton of text messages coming in. We rely on the volunteers of this community, the people of this community are the ones who help, who make Berkshire Food Project what it is, sixty-plus volunteers with a waitlist right now. I'm the only full-time staff member at Berkshire Food Project, and our volunteers are a heartbeat. They are the ones who encourage me and encourage us to keep going and to say, "We're going to do this, we're going to continue to meet the need, we're going to continue to do what we got to do." It's the people from this community that do it. So, a large kudos to them, and I do call them the heartbeat. So, that's kind of what I have to present this evening. I don't know if there are questions, kind of allowed to even ask that. It's been a long time since Alkenbreit's been in this chamber, but...
Well, just... Okay, councilors, any questions? Councillor Wilkinson?
Just curious. Could you repeat your address?
One thirty-four Main Street, it's at the Congregational Church. That's where we're located, yeah.
Councillor Fitch?
Yeah, just as a follow-up, I had already gotten scheduled with Matt, told him that I'm going to go over there for lunch on the second of December, so that's next Tuesday at eleven-thirty, if anybody would like to join me.
Any further questions? Councillor McCarron?
Just wanted to make a comment. First of all, thank you for your presentation, and I did, I listened to you last night as well, and I wanted, oh, my ears, I wanted to say that the sense of belonging inquiry is just as important as the meals you're serving. And it's just, it's amazing. My mother-in-law used to be a volunteer many, many years ago, and I remember dropping her off, and the kitchen was just bustling. And it's just amazing how people just feel so wanted there. Wanted, thank you for continuing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Alkenbreit.
Thank you.
Pleasure to have you here.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay, committee reports and minutes. Hearing done, we have no licenses. Going to move on to open forum. Open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you've reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. If you'd like to speak on open forum, please raise your hand, I'll call you to the microphone. Ms. Reel, please step up to the mic.
Virginia Reel, thirty-six Solman Street. I just wanted to make an announcement that Nacho is working with a group of volunteers in the community to develop a pilot program this year around snow shoveling. So, if anyone who's out there watching this would like to be either part of this group or want to volunteer to shovel snow, we would love to hear from you. Probably try to keep it on a small scale this year so we can get our footing on it and, you know, get the experience we're able to do this on a larger scale. So, I would suggest if you would send an email to northadamscho@gmail.com, then that you can, I will get back in touch with you if you want to engage with this program in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Now turn it over, mayor for mayor updates. Mayor, do you have any updates for us tonight?
Just one quick update. Our annual tree lighting is tomorrow night at five-thirty outside the First Baptist Church. The team has been working very hard on this event, so I hope all of you can join us, and happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Thank you. Liaison updates, councillor updates. Councillor Shay?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the mayor for presenting the proclamation in support of survivors of suicide loss day. I reached out to the mayor in regards to this not too long ago after learning the day of our last meeting, a friend of mine committed suicide. And there were many people in a community that is not North Adams, but in a community that are missing this person and are still struggling with finding those answers to why. He was a great human being, his name was Ian Peak, and I just wanted to acknowledge him and that his life, while tragically ending, inspired this to come forward, to be acknowledged. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I just have a quick couple of things. Being that this is the week of Thanksgiving, I wish to take a moment to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving or just have a great holiday weekend. I also want to ask that we all take a few minutes at some point in time in the next couple of days to reflect what we're thankful for. We all have something to be thankful for and just to reflect, time of reflection to just kind of, think of all the things that you have in your life that people may not have. Also, in going along with suicide, if you feel, anybody out there feels that they have no place to turn, there are resources out there. And I don't know if, the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, do we have access to the nine-eight-eight service? I know there's a service out there.
On your phone?
On your phone.
I don't know off the top of my...
Okay. I know there's resources out there. Nothing is so desperate that you need to take your own life, talk to somebody, talk to anybody, and please get some help. Councillor Shay?
Yeah, nine-eight-eight is a national hotline number, so it is, it should be available in the United States to anybody. There are also local organizations and numbers that you can contact as well, or specific ones, for specific groups of people.
And I think everybody in this room has somebody or has a family member that has gone that way, so... Mayor?
Councillor Sapienza, I could just, we encourage people, if you see something, say something. If something just doesn't feel right, if you run into someone, never, ever hesitate to call nine-one-one and reach out to them.
Thank you. Councillor Blackner?
I just want to, I know we're going into the holiday shopping season, and I want to remind people to shop local, Small Business Saturday, give somebody a gift certificate locally if possible. And, you know, I understand it's easier to sit down on Amazon and just click away, but we do have some great stores, you know, Norad Mill, Spaces Downtown, and then we have, even if they're not local companies, it's our friends and families and our neighbors that work in the big box stores in North Adams, in Berkshire County. So, again, try to take that extra step. And the other thing I say is sometimes the best gift you can give is a gift of time. So, if you know somebody who may be struggling and you can help them out, whether it's watching their kids for a couple hours so they can take a shower if they're a young mom, or they can go off and do something, or just help do their dishes, or shovel the sidewalk like the program that Virginia's talking about, or just sit and have a cup of tea and chat about what's important to them and what their memories are. And I think we get so caught up in buying the newest TV and the newest gaming system, and also, there's so many organizations out there that are looking for donations, so if you can, teach your kids to give first.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Okay, moving on. I'm going to turn it over to the city clerk, Madam Clerk. Do you have any updates for us tonight?
Well, one thing that I do want to remind people is that we are closing in now on our new street listing where we will be... our new street listing, where we will be sending out to everybody all the, it is very important for us to get those back. When we are sending out, we are trying to confirm residency, and that helps with many things for the city. And we will be coming up, and we're already working on, our next federal update for the census, so we need to really all work together and kind of get those censuses back into the office. If anybody has any questions on them, once they receive them, they can feel free to give us a call in the office as well. More than happy to help.
Okay, thank you. Correspondents, I have one item. In your packets tonight, there's a Berkshire Gas Order of Notice. I will not read the notice. You can read it at your convenience. It's called Berkshire Gas Notice to File in Public Hearing and Request for Comments, and that can also be found online for people at home, but it is at the end of your packet if you wish to read it and if you wish to respond. And on that note, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Some would.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good holiday, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.